It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Carl, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Please signify by stating present. Councilmember Remley?
Present.
Ronain?
Present.
Lunsman?
Present.
Reif?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Reinbold?
Present.
Langer?
Present.
Rux?
Present.
Mayor Shawman?
Present, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, I understand that there's a slight modification before we approve this week's agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is relatively new item, but one of the reasons we put this on for the approval of agenda, so if things come in that staff believes need your attention immediately, we can ask you to put those on. So tonight, we're asking that you add a bill to the payment of bills for interest on the softball complex. This is the first payment towards that bond in the amount of $52,639.81.
Thank you very much. Do you need a motion to make that addition, or we'll just do it when we?
To approve the agenda with that addition.
Move to approve the agenda with that amendment.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux, since we've got a couple of members on our television screens. Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote for the approval of agenda?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of minutes for last week's meeting, the minutes from the meeting of November 16th. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Reif. Does anyone have anything to add on these things, or was anything out of sorts? Otherwise, Carl, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Move right along to our open forum. We've got an open forum speaker here tonight. We've got Ms. Terry Roll. Terry, if you'd make your way up to the podium, make sure the microphone is on so that we can hear you, and why don't you give us what you'd like to tell us in about a three-minute period of time, if that would be possible?
Might go a little bit over. How do I know if it's on?
Can we hear? Yep, I think you're good. Welcome.
Hi. So, I'd like to just make some comments about the mask mandate, if I could. So, councilmembers and mayor, the issue before you today deals not only with fact but conflicting values. Value A believes that sickness and death are the worst possible outcomes. Value B believes sickness and death without love and relationship is the worst possible outcome. Value A has faith modern medicine will be able to cure and eradicate the virus. Value B believes, like, it accepts the consequences of the virus and chooses to focus on holding tighter to relationship because of the risk of death. Value A believes that pausing relationships in the short term means protecting and saving lives, while value B believes pausing relationships for almost 10 months is abandoning loved ones and saving yourself. There have been other times in history, even US history, when loved ones have been forced apart. These times have been seen as dark by the generations that have followed. Science was used to rationalize the separation of human beings. And even with all of modern medicine's advances, scientific explanations can still not be found for why human infants will die without human affection. I truly do not believe my fellow citizens are against wearing masks. What I do believe is they are incensed by a mask mandate that they feel is telling them that they cannot love their loved ones and family members the way they wish to. I feel that they feel like a mask mandate is telling them that their love for their community is wrong and not wanted. I feel that even worse, it's telling them that the way they care for their neighbor can have them be brand a criminal. I do not believe that that is the intent or wish of any council member here. So how do we solve this problem? I have three suggestions for you, alternative solutions to the mask mandate. One would be an actual media campaign. There has been no actual clear voice, not even from the top representatives of our government. I have seen the President, the President-elect, and Speaker Pelosi incorrectly use their masks. They're taking them off, they're setting them on the podiums in front of them, the tables in front of them. Nobody's using these masks correctly, not according to the CDC or the World Health Organization. You're supposed to take them off by the ear loops. You're supposed to sanitize your hands taking them off. You're supposed to sanitize your hands putting them on. If you're not using it, you're supposed to put it in a paper bag, Ziploc bag with an opening. Right? Even among the councilmembers, you guys aren't sure who's high-risk, because nobody knows. We need a clear, concise message, and if the rest of the government's not going to do it, you guys do it. Send a message. Make it clear, make it concise. We have nowhere in our own city that has a clear, concise message. We can't rely on the paper because it's been bought out. How many times? We don't know. And I'd also like to add a W to wash, to the four Ws, right? Wash your hands, wash your, watch your distance, and wear a mask. Let's add wish kindness. Please and thank you seem simple words, don't they? But they make a big difference. So if I'm walking into Kessler's, hey, man, I wish you kindness. Walmart, wish you kindness. Simple, but effective. We teach children this. Two, let's borrow a policy from Wales, okay? We know that infections are going up in households. Wales instituted a policy called a bubble. Households, they're recommending that you bubble with one other household. We know that humanity needs connection. We are walking through stores right now, treating each other like we're some kind of virus, like everyone's infected, stay away from each other. No. Let's recommend to the public, one or two other households, connect together with them. That way, your children still have playmates, you're still interacting with friends, but let's keep it to one or two households, so at least we can control the infection rate. This family gets COVID, who are they interacting with? Bob and Jill, okay? Right? And number three, we need to unify Aberdeen. Beginning of COVID, I had to go three hours south and five hours north. And I will tell you something about Aberdeen. I will tell you what I saw. No other city, three hours south or five hours north, had more hearts on their windows than this city. And here we are, acting like the rest of this sad country is being divided? No, not Aberdeen. We need something to unify us. Why is it that we are not celebrating every member of this community that gets rid of COVID and gets healthy? Hospitals play a song every time an infant is born. They're celebrating that baby's birth. Everyone in the hospital hears it, from the emergency room to the doctors in surgery. Every single person in that hospital hears that song and knows that baby's born. Why aren't we doing that? Every life lost. Why can't churches ring their bells and say, "We honor the dead"? This is a war we're fighting, and instead of coming together like a war, we're sitting there, fighting amongst ourselves. Why? Because the people that are anti-mask, they're not anti-mask. They don't feel heard. Because why? Science, now you're wrong. What? No. We are not just a physical body, people. We're not. We are hearts, we are souls, and we are losing the majesty of what it means to be human. We are losing that. It has to stop. So whether it is symbolic that unites us, or the city finds it wise to invest in its own media device, such as, I don't know, a podcast, a Facebook Live, something, we need a centralized system to send out a consistent, reliable message, because we cannot rely on the paper or whatever. Even when I try to look up each one of you councilmembers, do you know how hard that is? I gotta go to Facebook and like, try to know your first and last names and look you people up? It's impossible. It's ridiculous. Pick something, anything. I don't care if it's YouTube, I don't care if it's Facebook, but something. I shouldn't have to go to 15 sources to find out about my city. I shouldn't have to do that. Pick a YouTube channel, I don't care, but something. Please. We cannot criminalize and penalize our fellow citizens, because it's not what we're about in Aberdeen. It's not who we are. Please stop that. We all are, we're scared, we want to try and control things, because that's what fear does to us. It makes this thing where we want to control things, and then we think we have this illusion that we, everything's good. We all feel the urge to do something. Let's just make sure it's the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roll, points, points well taken.
What was your name again, ma'am?
Terry Roll.
Terry Roll?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't live in the city, so sorry. I live outside the city, that's the curse of it.
Would you come here, please?
Huh?
I want to give you my information. So it's a little easier.
I have to say, it's smaller in here than it looks on TV.
Fish eye lenses, the magic of the TV.
Like, I always thought Mr. Gah, that he was like...
Thank you very much.
Nope.
No.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. With that, we'll move along to our consent calendar. We've got five items of routine city business to approve here. Could I get a motion to approve those five items on our consent calendar?
Move to approve. Second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Reinbold and a second from Councilman Remley. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to our old business. We've got a recommendation on bids for two 2020 single axle, axle truck cabin chassis for the Public Works Department Utility Division, possible approval to award the bid for the two 2022 freightliner, single axle trucks to the Truck Center Companies at a cost of $62,271. There was quite a bit of discussion on that, and we voted to table it last week, so I believe that you've had some forward motion on this whole discussion, Robin. In the meantime, tell us where we're at with it now.
We have communicated with both dealerships that bid on this. As you, I believe the city manager provided some information to you related to this. The information that we looked at was what additional things were over and above the spec. We had identified roughly $180 worth of equipment that would be over and above, that we would eventually have to purchase or do something with as we married the box to the chassis. So there, there is some additional things there that would save us money. And I believe there was some information that was shared, state law-wise, that, that the city attorney provided. And it appears to me that, that the way to move forward is not probably the popular choice from a local standpoint, but it appears to me that we're probably in a position where we're still going to have to recommend the out-of-town bid.
And Robin, it sounds like during this process for this last week, as well as the process from before, you know, we kind of tried our best to give everybody a fair shake and to, to make sure that everyone understood the bid from top to bottom, and it probably just sounded like, just kind of unfortunate almost that it did go to a local bidder.
This is unfortunate, and we had a similar situation last year where the local bidder did end up getting it. So, you know, sometimes it, it works out in the, in the local favor, sometimes it does not, but we do try to make sure there, it's a fair bid.
In the case last year, was it just the first bid came in, they were the little guys, and they got it, and they moved on with their lives, or was there other steps in the process like this?
There was a step in the process last year where the low bid was rejected because it did not meet the minimum specification. And so the second bidder was the one that was awarded the bid.
Move approval to, or move forward with recommendation on bids for the single axle freight truck from Truck Center Companies.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Remley to approve this, the bid as it is for the Truck Center Companies at a cost of $62,271. Does anyone else have anything to contribute to this conversation?
If I may, Mayor, yeah, I'd appreciate just a moment. I, I am convinced, first of all, that this is the right decision to do today. I wasn't last week. I really do appreciate the efforts of, of Mr. Bob Zine and Mr. Gah and Mr. Wagler to look into whether or not these bids were really apples to apples, and I'm convinced that they are. And so I will support this unhappily that this is going elsewhere, but it was, it's the right thing to do.
May I say something as well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Langer, what have you got?
I will not be supporting this. I just want to make it clear, I spent the week, I worked really hard talking to the two different legislators from Aberdeen, as well as my office at South Dakota Retailers, and I do think in there it says what's in the best interest of the city of Aberdeen. I understand the bidding process very well, I really do, but I, I just, for $100, $120, I'd like to see this stay local, and, you know, I, I think that that wording isn't there for a reason, and so I do not think purchasing this item out of state is in the best interest of the city of Aberdeen. So, just want to make that clear.
Ron, I'm curious if you could kind of speak to that, because the big factor, I think, for a lot of the council is the legality of the state's bidding process. We want to be sure that we're doing things the right way. We prefer to do business with a local vendor, especially when we're talking about 100 bucks that we could probably scrape up here tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we all wish that it was different, however, the state law is very clear on, on, in fact, I think it's intentional on trying to take this away from these kinds of gnashings over these very close bids, because eventually, over time, from a state policy perspective, it appears that these can create their own set of issues too down the road. So the state law says that you are required to accept the lowest bid when there, when all bids conform, which they do, when you have a responsible bidder, which you do, but under state law, you are required to, there is a provision fleshed out in, in case law for dealing with the issue of standing when, when a, when a bidder loses a bid, for example. And the one area that they do permit a bidder to sue is when there is favoritism in the award. And favoritism would include a local preference, where none would otherwise be allowed by statute.
And Councilwoman Langer, the best interest of the city, that, that language, is that pulled from the, where, where is that coming from? I think that we could all agree that the best interest of the city would be a local bid. Where, where does that come from?
I, I believe in, and I had a copy of it, in the bidding process, there is a, there is a language that says that the city of Aberdeen reserves the right to make a decision based off of the best interest of the city, and I, I had a copy of it, and I may be...
So that's not in state law? That's not in state law, that's just on our bid?
It's in our advertisement.
It's in the bid advertisement.
So, so by having that in our advertisement, are we breaking state law? I mean, I'm just, from my conversations, genuinely, and I, and I don't mean any disrespect, please, because I know all of your jobs, you guys have worked hard on this, but I, I worked really hard on it as well this week, talking to the legislator and, and my office, and from my understanding, by having that clause in there, and by viewing that as we interpret it, we, we can make this choice. So I'm personally making this choice that way. I, I'm just putting that out there, because that is, you know, how I'm planning to vote, but that, that is in there, and so please correct me if I'm wrong, that we, I mean, that's in there.
Ah, Ron, what have you got?
Councilwoman Langer, I, I understand where, what language you're looking at, that's in the actual bid spec itself, and that's kind of the permission that the city can be granted to correct technical irregularities or other kinds of things, or, or if something were to come up at the time of bid that was unanticipated and just required the city to back out completely, or to otherwise award based upon some other information. But here, where we fleshed out everything and have established an apples-to-apples bid process, that language would not, would not be availing in this instance.
Thank you both. Councilman Johnson?
I would just chime in to say, there's a great deal of empathy, I think we all feel, for our local vendors, and we will, we wish them the best success, and we want them to win whenever it's possible on our level playing field. I think it might be in the best interest of the council, just to avoid, to protect ourselves, that we avoid any possible legal action from a spurned vendor who submitted a fair and responsible bid, and there is that potential. You know, there will be other opportunities. I think it is in our best interest to play it straight here and follow the law with regret.
Councilwoman Langer, I'd like to add to this, too. The city manager, Gah, and I had a conversation this afternoon as it relates to the state law and what that prohibits and so forth, and I think your conversations with the state legislators is probably a really good starting point. I think that there's probably room for improvement on that bidding process, so if that's something that you're interested in taking part in, I'd be happy to help facilitate that or, or play a role in any way we could in order to make sure that the bidding process is, is not only fair, but also gives our local vendors the best shake at this sort of a business without getting us into legal hot water moving forward. And I think that there's probably a few things that could be amended in that language, but I would agree with Councilman Johnson. You know, we'd hate to blatantly break any state laws here, this is a recorded meeting.
And, and like I say, I, I, I agree that, you know, the, it may be one of those things where, you know, if we could even talk to the South Dakota Municipal League and see what options, you know, or even what other states have, the, these laws are a little antiquated and, and, but they're there for a reason, that is to protect the taxpayer dollars, to make sure that we're always giving, or always spending the taxpayer dollars as wisely as possible, and that, one of those things with that is accepting low bids. And, and this is no different, and we deal with it periodically, like with water treatment chemicals. We, we have to reject the bids because in testing, it doesn't meet maybe a standard we're looking for. So we, we do do it when we do, but I don't think a language in a, in a bid spec can be used or justified to violate state law, but I, I do think we need to work with legislators to make this a better process, to make sure that more money stays in state.
Thank you very much. With that, if no one else has anything to add, Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote on that bid?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
No.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to our new business. First, we'll start with a public hearing on petition to rezone property described as lots one and two, block 16, original plot of Aberdeen, 6th South, 1st Street, from C3 to R4 districts, possible first reading of an ordinance to rezone that. Brett Bill is here to tell us all about that. Brett, go ahead.
The petitioner's just requesting this rezoning in order to have mixed use of the property. They currently have an auto detailing shop on the main floor, they want to have residents on the upper floor. Staff and planning commission recommend approval of this rezoning.
Move to approve it. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Reinbold, and so that changes it to, is it high-density residential?
It's a central business district with a high-density residential overlay, so it's both zoning districts. That's very common in our downtown area.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bill? Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got discussion and possible first reading of ordinance 2011-02 requiring face covering, possible first reading of that ordinance. Ron, are you here to set that one up?
No, I will defer to the sponsoring council on this one.
Mr. Ronain, is that you?
I am one of four of us, Mayor. I'm happy to, to visit.
Please do.
Thank you so much. You know, I, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this, because there is nothing that's been talked about more than this approach the last several weeks. I'm not sure that there's anybody persuadable on the council, but I would make a few comments. You know, the United States has got the 4% of the world's population, we've got 20% of the COVID-19 infection rate. We are among the worst in the, in the world. And among the worst in our country is our state. If, if South Dakota was a country unto itself, we would have the third highest mortality rate in the entire world. We are, you know, we are not doing this right. We have healthcare workers that are begging for us to, to implement a mask mandate, because mask mandates have been proven to work. I am not a scientist, I'm not an infectious disease expert, but all of the serious experts in this field are saying Americans need to be wearing masks, North and South Dakotans need to be wearing masks. We are really overwhelming our healthcare workers, we are seeing people die unnecessarily. I think it is well past time for us to employ this very simple measure to help control this disease, to help slow this unrelenting infection rate that we have been experiencing in South Dakota, in a brown county. So on that basis, I would move that this ordinance be adopted.
I second it.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain, and I've got a second from Councilwoman Langer for the first reading of this. I know that there's probably quite a bit of people with opinions on this. Does anyone have anything to share before we take a vote?
I would like to share something.
Sorry, oh, Councilwoman Langer, go ahead. You can't see what people are doing with their hands around here, so.
Sorry, I can't see very well. So, when I ran for this position, I promised that I would make decisions in regards to this entire pandemic based on what our healthcare situation needed. In fact, during that time, and actually throughout the last few months of all this, many of us have stated that same thing in, in, well, in this room, I'm not in your room, but in that room. And now is our time, that the healthcare system is actually asking for this of us. I'm talking about our local Aberdeen system, the doctors that we've trusted for years, and our community that needs us. As a small business owner, I talk to businesses all the time, it's what I do every single day on a daily basis, and I've discussed this need with many of local businesses as well. And whether or not they like masks, they all say the same thing to me, that they're all just looking for guidance from us on what to do. It's uncomfortable as a business owner to try to navigate the process as well, because we don't have guidance. I realize, guys, that there's studies on both sides. I understand that completely. I know all of us are smart, we can all pull up articles, we can all pull up research, and we can find whatever statement we want to support whatever point we want. I get that. I'm just simply asking the community to hear our healthcare system, they're asking for our help. Again, I realize that masks don't make this virus go away, please don't think that I think that, but it hopefully will slow the spread, which is what we need right now. We don't have to shut our economy down, I would never advocate for that, we just can simply mask up and hope that we slow the spread. Compliance with laws is never 100%, I get that. Seatbelt laws exist, laws against drinking and driving exist, smoking in certain places you can't do, it's illegal. We still have people who break those laws, but a large number of people comply, which make the laws effective. I've asked several times, or I've been asked several times, what my end game in all of this is, and that's simple. I'm just trying to make sure our healthcare system is not overwhelmed and that there are beds for those who need them, not just for COVID. I want to make it clear, there's car accidents, there's heart attacks, there's strokes, whatever else beds are needed for. We are struggling as a community. I hope that every healthcare worker, in fact, every essential worker that may be listening and hearing me tonight knows that you matter, the jobs you do matters, and I am incredibly thankful for them and I will not stop advocating for them. And I hope our community's support continues to grow whether or not this mandate passes tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Reif?
From the, I guess, the emails I've received, and I'm sure all of us could attest to the number of emails we've received on this topic. It's been a lot. But the emails we've received and the arguments maybe outside of that that I've heard, I think I can boil this discussion down to two schools of thought when it comes to the promotion of wearing masks. One school of thought says if others aren't wearing a mask, we must somehow shame them or force them into wearing one. And if they still don't wear a mask, we need to get stricter and stricter until we bend them to the government's will. I noticed on this particular ordinance, it says a non-emergency ordinance. I'm curious what the emergency ordinance looks like, what penalties and fines are in that version. Look around the country and look at other states. We've seen where this path leads us, and I'm not interested at all in starting down that path. I don't support this ordinance as I don't think this leads to anyone changing their minds. It simply cements already established positions and it fuels divisiveness in our community. The other school of thought, and what I've been espousing the last few weeks, is for the city council to continue to work with the chamber and other organizations in order to provide businesses the resources they need to keep this top of mind with their customers. We need to approach this as a community. We don't need to demonize one side or the other. We need to work together. But I agree that we can do more. I've heard radio spots with council members Langer and Ronain, and I think that's great. We also need to include Avera and Sanford and give them airtime to promote the wearing of masks, along with hand washing and social distancing and generally following CDC guidelines. As a city, I think we can invest some of the funds we've received from COVID to purchase masks. In fact, I've reached out to the mayor and this seems like something that we could do. Again, as Councilwoman Langer said, our goal here shouldn't be everyone wearing masks because that's not at all realistic. Our goal should be more people wearing masks than there currently are. I was in Menards last Friday doing some shopping and I noticed of the roughly 100 people that I saw in the store, all but one were wearing a mask. There was a recent story in the American News last week about the YMCA, about their success and the willingness of those entering to wear a mask. So if a business wants to require masks, I believe the community will respect and honor that request. As a council, in my opinion, we need to get past the mandate debate because for me, at least, the word mandate is a nonstarter. Instead, we should focus our conversation on ways we can work together and coming up with ways to affect change. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Reif? Councilman Reddely, what have you got?
Yes, you mentioned it's not right to demonize both sides. Well, what if one side is the demon? I mean, there's madness in this country, complete, total madness, beginning with Trump. And then he sends it on down to our governor who does nothing, and she passes it along to our city council, which we have to make life-changing decisions for these people. And, you know, frankly, it's just, it doesn't seem fair because I've lost so many friends in the last 10 months because I've taken a side. So we need to do something. This is ridiculous what's going on. You know, I've been text messaging back and forth with my buddy at Massachusetts General Hospital, Keith Lilimow, who is chief of surgery there, chief of staff. And I did read a letter from him last week. And he had planned on coming to South Dakota to visit his dad, who's 94, 95, mid-90s, who was very good health. He contacted COVID somehow. He survived COVID, but now he's recovering in Bethesda Nursing Home. And his son Keith, and for bringing my phone, I don't have, I'll have to paraphrase what Keith said. He is deteriorated quite rapidly and he doesn't even know if he has the will to live. So Keith will not be coming to South Dakota to visit his dad because what's the point? He's in isolation. He's going to die alone, if he in fact does die. If he doesn't, he's going to be very miserable for a long time. So we need to save some of these Kenny Lilimows in the world. We need to do something. We need to vote this in. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilman Remley? Does anyone else have anything to?
I guess I'd like to say something. I'm strongly opposed to the mandate. I know that makes me look like a demon, I guess, or somebody that doesn't care. I do care strongly. I care for our medical staff at both hospitals, in Aberdeen, outside of Aberdeen, other small communities. This hits home for me. Anyways, not going to go there, but I think we need to step up and do a better job. And I think what Josh said is a good step towards that. I think we need to step up, try to get people to wear masks, don't demonize them if they don't. I mean, that's the last thing you want in your country is divided. What happened the last time this country got divided? I guess I remember from history class. It's not a good thing.
So it's going on right now.
Yeah, and we need to stop demonizing people. Let's show people a little respect, okay? And that's a really good start towards it. I think we can come a long ways by asking people to wear masks. I think there's an old saying that says you catch more flies with honey than vinegar. I think this might be a pretty good way to try to catch some flies with honey instead of vinegar. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Rux, you got something for us?
You know, and I guess maybe, you know, for me, I've never demonized someone for not wearing a mask. I've never demonized someone for wearing a mask. What I support in this is maybe trying to get to some unity, to get people to realize that, and I think we're in agreement here, that masks work, that masks could save lives. And I will support any effort to encourage our community to do whatever it takes to hopefully save our friends, our neighbors, and possibly even our family members. And I think it's, you know, what I'm hearing even here on the council is you have people who are, you know, rigid that, you know, this is a demonizing thing. I don't think, you know, saying, hey, you know, it's no different than saying, hey, don't speed. We know there are people that speed, but a vast majority of people won't speed. So it's trying to get a clear message, a singular message from this council to do the right thing and think of others before thinking of yourself. And that's really what this comes down to is, and I understand we have this one side who says, you know, it's my personal liberty, and this other side says, well, you know, they can choose to stay home, but no matter what you do, we're sacrificing, some people have to give up something in order to have the most of something. And that is, you know, if people stay at home, they're not exercising their full rights as well as the people who say, well, I'm not wearing a mask because it's my rights, actually get their full rights at the expense of others. And that's not where we are either. You know, the founding fathers were very clear in numerous things that this nation will stand together or it will fall together. And that's what we need to do as a community. So if, you know, Councilman Reif, if you have ideas, you know, if we can maybe spend some money in marketing and encourage businesses to do the right thing, I'm still for that, irregardless of how this vote goes. Because if we can save the lives of our community, give our nurses and doctors a break because they are tired, they're working really hard, and we need to acknowledge that. I'm all for that as well. And like I say, I supported the resolution because it's good practice. I'm going to support this because it's good practice, and anything we can do, I will support that as well.
Thank you, man. Councilman Rux, I'm glad that you brought up the resolution because I have done quite a bit of homework across the state, and I can tell you that our resolution is virtually the same as Sioux Falls has for their ordinance, Huron, which has a resolution, Vermillion, it's actually more encompassing than Mitchell. So all of these other cities that are getting credit for having a mask mandate in fact have done exactly what we've already done. So I don't think that Aberdeen has gotten the credit that it deserves in this discussion. I think that that's kind of an orchestrated effort or perhaps it's just an oversight. Either which way, I think that this council deserves a little bit more credit for having done as much as Sioux Falls, Huron, Vermillion, more than Mitchell, and then every other city in the state with one exception.
And at the same point, I think we also deserve credit for what we did in the beginning. I mean, it was difficult choices, it was difficult decisions, but the difference between some of those resolutions and what we have is Sioux Falls has a mandate, Mitchell has a mandate, Brookings has a mandate, Rapid City has a mandate. Now, we call it a mandate, but we could really call it anything we want, you know? Just put ordinance in there to say you have to wear a mask, and it would probably sound a little different. But like, you're right. I think our language, even in the resolution, is good except it then goes to people's preference and maybe not so much personal responsibility, but what their preference is.
So a few things that I'd like to point out that are very different, that make this mandate very distinct among all the others that I've found is, first of all, there's no exception in this ordinance for social distancing inside. Even the most restrictive of the ordinances that are in South Dakota currently and in other states that I've seen allow for exceptions with areas inside in which social distancing is possible. There's an outdoor requirement, there's a misdemeanor charge of public nuisance for non-compliance, there's indefinite length of enforcement. So in terms of those type of things, I would say this is dramatically more harsh than any other mandate that I've seen on the books elsewhere. And for that reason, I'm obviously very opposed.
Actually, in the ordinance before us, there's no penalty. There's, it's not a misdemeanor or anything.
Public nuisance, violation of this ordinance is hereby declared to be a public nuisance, which may be abated by a city code enforcement official, of which we only have two, by a restraining order, preliminary and permanent injunction, and other means provided for this law, and the city may take action to recover the costs of the nuisance abatement. Now, our code enforcement officers are very busy as it is. They've fielded over 1,400 complaints already this year. They're backed up, they're too busy to be messing with calls about masks, and they don't have the power to tick it. So once they get to a scene and once they determine that the violation is in order, they've got to call the police who have already told us that this is going to be a giant strain on their system. We're backing up our systems, we're forcing something into an enforcement action that I think just doesn't belong. No other city in the state has had success with it or even tried for that matter. I think that it's absolutely preposterous to say that something has no penalty, but also it has a penalty.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask, can I ask one question?
Councilwoman Langer?
I'm just curious because, I mean, we are praising the resolution that we put into place. It was not unanimous, unfortunately, but I am very glad we put that resolution into place. But my question is, I respect your opinion on what you think is wrong with this, but is there a way for us to compromise on this? Or, I mean, you stated those reasons why you wouldn't be voting for it, so is there things we could do to fix this? Or is this a no-starter with all of you who are voting no?
Like I said, I believe that the resolution which we have in place is identical, virtually identical, to what all those other cities, it's actually more restrictive than Mitchell. Rapid City doesn't have an ordinance on the books. Mitchell only prohibits or requires the use of masks in their city buildings at this time, and that I think is a far cry from every outdoor space in the entire town.
Actually, the mayor of Mitchell issued a state of emergency and put a mask mandate into place that actually followed our resolution.
At what point did that happen?
Last week.
I was given the guidance that they had a city building requirement. I guess we're muddling in the weeds. It doesn't change my opinion on the matter, but so perhaps those guys are in league with us and not at a lower degree.
And like I say, as far as number four, like I said, I'd be happy to get rid of that. I mean, like I say, Sioux Falls passed a mandate with very little, if any, enforcement whatsoever.
It specifies no enforcement.
Yeah, and, you know, the whole thing, and we can get into enforcement or not, but you know, I will admit, our police officers, our code enforcement officers have better things to do than chasing people around and creating more division and either demeaning or demonizing people. We've seen, all seen the videos on YouTube and that of people getting tasered over a mask and that type of stuff. And I don't think anyone wants that in our community. But like I say, I'm of the mind where whatever we can do, I will support.
So I think, Councilman Ronain, what have you got?
Thank you very much. I apologize. I know I already spoke. I guess my question, Mayor, is if we strike, if we strike the language about public nuisance, would you support this ordinance? Because I would move to strike that entire paragraph.
No, I believe that what we've got on the books for the resolution is sufficient. That reflects what all the other towns are doing with one exception, and I think that that covers our bases. I would agree that Councilman Reif and Councilman Reinbold's suggestions, which mirror some previous sentiments from Councilwoman Langer about marketing, doing other things that we can show that we're behind this effort and that we can enforce that throughout this community and hopefully give people the resources that they need to make a decision, you know, that would positively affect the health of this community. I talked to City Manager Joe about purchasing some masks after Josh and I had a conversation this afternoon, and I think that we could easily, as a council, instruct him to buy a boatload of these things. And I think we could use our connections at the Chamber of Commerce to distribute them to members that they could freely distribute at the doors of their businesses if they choose without costing themselves anything. I think that would make it easy. I think that would make it painless. And I think that people that otherwise would not be wearing a mask would wear a mask indoors in those situations. You see it in action in Kessler's. In fact, I went to Kessler's several times this weekend, kind of kept an eye on it. And I would agree, I bet 70% of people were wearing them, and of those people, I would bet half of them got them from the receptacle of the masks at the front of the store. So I think that it is having a big positive impact, and I think that we can empower that. In terms of marketing, I would say that we could use some of this COVID money. I think we could instruct our city manager to take a look. Perhaps it's further boosting and putting money behind the advertisements that you and Ms. Langer have put into place, or perhaps we develop a marketing strategy which would include social media and other things to encourage people in this community to mask when they go places. So I think between providing masks at no cost to people and encouraging them through a marketing campaign, I think we could get all of the people in this community aware of our efforts and with a relatively minor amount of money, all of which is provided through CARES Act funding.
Rapid City and Sioux Falls both got national news today because our governor has not issued a mask mandate.
Councilman Remley?
Yes.
Councilman Lundsmann had actually raised his hand before. I'll let you speak, but please wait your turn.
No matter which direction we vote on this, I mean, somebody wins, somebody loses. There's just no way to get around that. If we vote for it, we help people and we hurt people. If we vote against it, we help people, we hurt people. I've heard, in my past life, I worked a lot of people with sexual assaults. I've heard from some, several of those already, saying that it would be a huge detriment on them if they had to wear a mask because they, in their unfortunate circumstances involved choking or suffocating, and putting a mask on them is a huge burden. Can you imagine if somebody came up to, law enforcement or code enforcement officers came up to them and asked them, why are you not wearing a mask? Now they have to relive it all over again? So again, that may or may not be the reason to or not to, but you have to look at that for other people that, we say mask is not that big a deal, but some people, it is a very big deal. It is a life-altering thing for them, whether it be a medical condition or a life, some life event that had occurred to them that we are going to now resurface because we do it. So either way, on one side, we're saying we're saving lives, on the other side, we are also hurting people. So first and foremost, as far as I'm concerned, I am not for a mask mandate. I think our resolution is sufficient. It covers exactly what our other towns cover, but I am very much for a campaign that we can put out there to educate people. I think that if we've fallen short on anything, that's probably where we've fallen. I do commend our other council members such as Ronain and Langer for their pushing out of the radio ads. I know Ms. Langer has given out all the papers, the different signs and all that type of stuff, and if anything, we should have probably gotten behind them or been leading with them in those types of things, and I think we can still do that. And I think it's much more important that we do that than we do making a mask mandate. So that's where I stand on the issue.
Councilman Remley?
Yes.
Have you got something to add?
Yes. So... Sioux Falls, Rapid City, both made national news today. And both of them were criticized because of our governor, not because of their city councils, because their city council. The mayor of Sioux Falls ordered a mask mandate finally, after three or four weeks or whatever. And he says, "Well, this is a cowboy state. I mean, people don't like to be told what to do." And of course, they don't. But if we, we may be next. We may be getting a call from CNN or from, from CBS or whatever, because we're opposing a mask mandate. You know, not because we wanted to, but because we were forced to divide on this. And it's, it's unfair, totally unfair, to have our governor sit idle and not help us in this situation. So, I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm going to vote for it.
Councilman Remley. And does anyone else have anything to add? I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought that that's what you said. You said, "You're done."
You're fine. That's fine.
Sounds good. We've got a motion and a second on this reading. And a couple of hopeful points before we cast this bid. I would say we are currently at twenty-eight hospitalizations for COVID in Brown County. That was down from forty-four last week, which is a thirty-six percent reduction. So, that's something to be very, very thankful of. And in terms of, you know, the worst in the world, the highest death rate, Brown County represents just point five percent, half of one percent death rate of deaths versus positive cases. That's half of the state's rates, and it's less than twenty-five percent of the national average. So, things aren't doing so bad here. I think that some of these worst-in-the-world type of headlines are using very, very limited data from a while ago. We don't have the worst spread in the nation, and we certainly aren't doing all that bad here. And I'm proud to say that we've got a substantial reduction in hospitalization bed usage this week. So, hopefully, that trend continues, and hopefully, we can continue to move in the right direction. Carl, if no one else has anything to add, would you please give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Rife.
No.
Lundgren.
No.
Ronay.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
No. Motion is defeated. We will move right along to our possible first reading of an ordinance, 201104, setting up the salaries and wages of city officials and employees for the upcoming year. Possible first reading of that ordinance. I know that we all have a copy of it printed in front of us, and I believe we're all emailing this information as well. Joe, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is something that's done on an annual basis, and it's kind of a culmination of some of the things you have previously approved. For example, in the annual budget, we, we use the words union and non-union. In the annual budget, it was accounted for, the non-union employees to receive a two-point five percent cost of living. We do step increases for those folks every other year. Twenty-twenty-one, in the even year, so twenty-twenty-one is not a step year, so that's what's accounted for in this ordinance, is a two-point five percent cost of living. And then the union folks have a little bit different step system, a little bit different increase. You did ratify that agreement a couple of meetings ago, so all of that is, is in here for both the police and the fire departments. A little bit different for each of those. And so, with that, staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Does anyone have any questions about any of this salary business? Otherwise, Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Lundgren.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the possible first reading ordinance, 201105, supplementing the 2020 budget for various unanticipated projects, activities, and expenses related to COVID. Carl, tell us about that money.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been trying to track all of the different expenses that we have done in different departments that are directly related to COVID. The departments have been very good about identifying different items that they've had to purchase or services that they've had to head, have done in their departments. We ran some reports to try and add those all up, up to current, in order to do a supplement to account for those additional expenditures that were unanticipated. Knowing that there are still about six weeks left in this year, I took those numbers, added about fifteen percent, fifteen and twenty percent, to allow for the end of November and December, and came up with these numbers as a potential supplement. Finance office will track these numbers as we go through the rest of the year to make sure that if we need to do another adjustment, we will. I don't anticipate that, but we will track it irregardless. Because the money is received into the general fund, we do have to transfer about a hundred and fifteen thousand from the general fund to various other funds in order to have cash available, along with the budget supplement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronay and a second from Councilman Remley. Carl, could you give us just a broad outline of, you know, just very, very high level, what the library, for instance, would need for COVID? But I'm not trying to call them to the table. I'm just, what are some of these expenses the public can kind of get their head around what we're spending the money on?
There's a wide variety of items that have been purchased. For instance, library did quite a bit of cleaning before they reopened. And, and when they are open, they do quite a bit of additional cleaning, so there's that expense. They do have face masks and hand sanitizer, various items like that. For instance, with Parks and Recreation, they did quite a bit of signage to make sure that people were aware when the pandemic started that certain areas were closed. They've done quite a bit of additional cleaning that was unanticipated. For instance, at Storybook Land, when, whenever possible, they would clean the different activities. Our public safety people have got quite a bit of additional PPE, masks, goggles, other clothing, items like that. So, we, as we tabulated this report, we go through and look at it and, and see that it's all COVID-related items.
Sure. I trust you. I just was curious, things like water reclamation fund, what would they, what would those guys spend three thousand dollars for?
Water reclamation plant, they had to get quite a bit of PPE, is primarily at water reclamation plant.
Sounds good. And that, the reason why that's classified as fund, rather, is just the financial channel that it needs to have to.
Correct.
Okay, great. Got a motion and a second. Any other questions that anyone might have? Otherwise, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reit and Bold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lundgren.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the 2020 Performance Reviews of the City Manager, Finance Officer, and City Attorney, motion by the council to conduct those reviews of appointed officers and then place completed performance reviews in personnel files of those people. Joe, were you going to tell us something about that?
Yes, this is something that's, that's done annually throughout our system. Supervisors conduct performance evaluations. So, you as, as the three of us sitting here as our supervisor, it's, it's your duty to complete that. Mine's a little more challenging this year, in that this is my six-month review, which under my contract is required, so we'll do that a little bit differently. But we'll be sending out to you via email, either in the, well, by the end of the week, which this week is Wednesday, forms for, for each of the three of us. And then we'll, we'll discuss that a little bit more as it goes on.
So, the way you've handled it, at least in my short tenure here, was we created a bit of a subcommittee to meet on this. Clint, were you in that last year? And, and then we, that was pretty much after City Manager Lynn had performed Carl and Ron's performances, but this time it'll be a little bit more of a diplomatic process.
Yeah, I think it was me, you.
Rob and Dave.
Rob and Dave.
They're pretty well in stone by the time that they had gotten to us. There might be a little bit more discussion in.
I do think, though, because I was talking to the city, city manager, there is a change now, under the Home Rule Charter, that where before Lynn would kind of do the performance reviews of the city attorney and finance officer, and we'd just sort of sign off on them. With the change that was just done, we are now their direct supervisors. Am I correct?
Right.
Right. And, and the plan for this is we will email out to each of you a form for all three of us, so that you can complete them as a whole, because it is the group. Then those will be compiled, and as the, the motion here calls for, to put those in the personnel files. And that's what's, what's sufficient there. If you want to, to have a subcommittee or a meeting with the, the city attorney and the city finance officer, you could do that. Under my contract, it does require that the compilation be completed and then shared with all of you, and then we have a, a meeting to discuss that. So, that the meeting on the third week of December, we'll go into closed session to discuss that one, because that is part of the, the contract that I was hired in. During the future, we won't have to go to that if we don't want to. We could return back to the subcommittee, but at this point in time, I, I request that we do a, a whole meeting with the whole council. And as this being my first year, I think that's beneficial. There are a couple of new council members that came on right after I was hired, so I think to make sure the group is on the same page is very important.
Sounds good. Just wanted to make sure we were not missing any steps, so...
So, a question, though, is like, when we get all our forms completed, who do we want to compile them?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Thank you. So, when we're done filling them out for the three, then we just send them to you and you'll compile everything?
Yep. Yep. And then, I guess, we'll be meeting as a whole, as it relates to him. And if, I guess, in terms of Carl and, and Ron, what is the next step, would you suggest?
This is kind of new, new territory, but...
I'm happy to compile them. I'm happy to redistribute them any which way we see fit, so.
So.
We'll figure that out.
You know, for myself, I wonder if that isn't, if the approach that, that Mr. Guy is suggesting for himself isn't really the right approach going forward for the city attorney and the finance officer. Maybe we should all fill out our, our own evaluations, have those compiled, and let everybody voice their vote. You know, this never happened in the past, as I recall, because the previous mayor didn't want to be involved in, in reviewing his predecessor, the city manager, and so he didn't want to be involved, and that's why we've... I think what Mr. Guy is suggesting is a efficient approach for all of us to be involved.
I agree. It's most diplomatic, and I think that honestly speaking, it'll give everyone the best marching orders moving forward. So, get those emails, send them to me, and we will, we will reconvene. But I will take the motion to conduct those performance reviews as stipulated there, unless there needs to be further clarification.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is that you, Dave? Okay. I've got a motion from Councilman Ronay and a second from Councilman Lundgren. Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Lundgren.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the twenty, twenty-one Water Treatment Chemicals, possible approval to award the bids for the water treatment chemicals as recommended by the Water Treatment Department. Bob is here to, to tell us about that.
All right. Again, this is just our annual deal. We have the chemicals listed here, except for the carbons. And again, we're, we're doing a performance evaluation of the carbons to see which one will give us the best return. We're seeing that by using our PAC two, we're actually able to use about half of what we would use if we were using our PAC one. So, eventually, I think in the future, we'll be able, we'll be able to save some money by going with the two carbons and going with the performance reviews allows us to, to really see which does, what, what works best with our water when there's taste and odor events. As far as the other chemicals, they're all pretty much tried and true companies we've used in the past, and the prices were fairly similar, some a little higher, some a little lower, so...
Move to approve the awarding of the bids.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rife. It sounds like everything seems well in line with what you'd expect for such a bid process.
We did deny, decide not to do with the softener salt, as that's a new system, and it's came in quite a bit higher than our estimate.
And is there something that needs to replace that, or will just be without salt?
We'll work on how to address it in the future.
Sounds good.
It's a small amount. We'll actually be purchasing for that salt. It's part of a new feed system we're working with.
Thank you. Mr. Bronn, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote for the water treatment chemical bids?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lundgren.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Remley. Aye. Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the pay request, 2020 SODA or soda ash system improvements. CST Industries, the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars, possible approval of that final payment to CST for work on the project. And Bob, you're still here. Tell us about that project.
That was with the repair of our, the upper, the roof of our soda ash silo, and while they had it off, we added three more feet, which gave us an additional thirty thousand pounds of storage capacity, all within the same roof structure we currently have. So, we're going to be able to cut down on the dust that's being caused at the plant from the silo leaking whenever we filled it. So, we've got that constructed and taken care of. We're rebuilding the feed system on the bottom, but otherwise, the actual structure of the silo is in good shape now.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. I don't know how you guys have been, but since I've been on the, on this committee, I've not been out there to check this place out, so perhaps maybe it would be worthwhile for you to set up a time where, where we could get out there and check out some of these major improvements that we've been making in the meantime. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Lundgren.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Thank you very much for joining us here tonight. Bob? Next, we've got the payment change order for Fifteenth Avenue Southeast Sewer Improvements Possible, approval of the payment of three hundred eighty-seven thousand ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents, and a change order number two, which is final, in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents in the amount of $14,527.35 to B&amp;B Contracting for that work in the project. Robin, tell us about that.
This is to close out that project. It went fairly well once we were able to get started. Of course, the creek level stayed really high for a long time this summer and that did delay the commencement of this project. However, everything did go very well with the exception of the one sanitary sewer that Clint pointed out last week. It seems like every one of these projects has one surprise or another. Most of the time we catch them before all the pavement's completed and everything. This one ended up afterwards. We, the change order items that did show up, we had to change method for removal of the pavement, as an example. We had it set up as a milling project. We did have to do total removal and keep the equipment off of the pipe. The pipe was collapsing as we wanted to go. So we had to keep the milling equipment off of it and we ended up doing all the removals with backhoes. So that you'll see some of those changes in the change order. Other than that, the project went very well and, and we're happy to say we recommend approval of the final pay estimate and the change order.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Rux. Any questions on this project? Clint, you've been pretty involved. Carl, go ahead and sign.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinfeld.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the review and approval of the claims and payroll. We've got bills with the list that was submitted to you earlier, as well as the change from the beginning of this meeting, as well as the payroll, which includes our social security, old age survivors, insurance, retirement health and life insurance. Can I get a motion to pay all that stuff?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion from Councilman Rife and a second from Councilman Reinfeld. Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinfeld.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers' report. Joe, what have you got?
A couple of things on scheduling. This is Thanksgiving week, so city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday. So we will be here tomorrow and Wednesday and then it'll be really quiet around here. So also, we're, we're on the new council schedule as far as first, third and, and fourth Mondays. There is a fifth Monday here in November, so there will not be a meeting. The, the first week in December is when we will return here for your next meeting. And then just a little follow-up in some of the discussions regarding mask marketing. If, if there are no big objections, if it's kind of the consensus based on what I heard, I'll reach out to some of you. I know there've been some discussions on this of how to perhaps purchase some masks, work on some public service announcements and some media campaigns. And our, our visitor from Public Comments seemed to echo that. I think folks believe that's a good thing to do. So I'll start working on that tomorrow, see what we can come up with. If we need to come back and bring some possible expenses, we'll do that at the next meeting. But hopefully we can get this rolling along pretty quickly.
Thank you. Councilwoman Langer, is the ad that you've cut, I unfortunately haven't heard it, is that something that you think would be a good starting point for this? Or is it, is this something that needs to be entirely separate from the ad that you're running?
Um, you know, Mr. Mayor, I was going to move, and I think we should have a discussion because we don't have a meeting next week quickly about, you know, moving forward with a marketing campaign and giving the city manager some ability to do that because we don't have a meeting next week. I spoke with him earlier this afternoon. I did meet with Troy McQuillan because he had sent the entire council an email offering her services at no cost to the city. So he is willing to run an ad in the Aberdeen Magazine. He is willing to design ads, billboards, whatever we would like for free. I as well am willing to do design work, whatever we need to. So my ad that I cut was a part of the chambers campaign. So I know we can, we can direct some efforts that way. But when I had spoken to the city manager earlier today, he definitely said he sees the availability of some funding. But again, I, I know we don't have a meeting next week, so I'd like to get this rolling sooner than later if we all agree that this is something that, you know, is, is the next step in helping, which I absolutely am on board with.
Sounds good. And I had taken some preliminary looks online just to kind of get a sense of how much money those masks call cost in bulk. And I think that they're very, very affordable, the blue ones like Kessler's distributes on their own dime. Councilman Rife.
I guess my only suggestion would be for Joe is, is I wonder if we can reach out to Lamar Advertising with their digital billboards and see if that's an avenue as well. They might be willing to donate some of those prices.
Councilman Rife.
Another, oh, sorry.
Is this something, I, I know it's not on the agenda, so that's probably not a good thing, where we can set a dollar amount tonight to get this ball rolling quicker? Is it possible to do an emergency funding for it where we set so many dollars away for right now for the city manager, Joe, to spend?
Councilman Rux.
I don't know, yes.
You know, I, I sit there, you know, we're, the city, city staff is usually pretty frugal and they try to get the most bang for the buck. But it's something this important, if we have funds available, I think Joe knows how much money we have. Just come to us with the plan. I, I'm full confident whether, you know, we can get Hub City and Dakota Broadcasting, even those, like I say, I know several years ago, all the council members went and did a buy local ad for the, for the chamber in Dakota Broadcasting, where we all went in and spoke. I, I think that could be a positive. I think the two ads that Tiffany and them have done. But I'm, I'm more of the mind what, our, our staff kind of knows what it could take. And we can add to it if they bring a proposal for us. But I don't want to hamstring it with a dollar amount now because we don't even know what the dollar amount would be, but.
I, I was just thinking to get something going. I, I don't know if we need it or if that's something.
What, what I'm hearing is you're open to spending money for this. So we'll, we'll reach out to, to both radio stations, to the folks that have volunteered some things, reach out to the, the other company you mentioned. We, we won't be shy about moving forward with this quickly. I, I think what we can do is quickly with a minimal amount of money will be appropriate. And if this looks like it's going to need to go on bigger and longer, then we'll, we'll be able to bring that up. But I do see that your, your, your comments earlier where everybody's pretty much for it. So we'll, we'll make sure we, we hit this hard and do it right.
And I think that, you know, Tiffany had mentioned the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that might be a good first stop too, because those guys could probably help us execute these, these masks to distribute and they might have a good idea about how many. You know, I was thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of five or 10,000 masks might be a really good starting point. They're virtually free. If we could get a, a stockpile of those to supply to the chamber to get the ball rolling and then we could inquire with them about the radio buy that they've got, perhaps as something we could supplement and just continue to hear the lovely voices of Councilman Robert Ronan and Councilwoman Tiffany Langer.